I know, that's what I thought. That's the reason I had to ask. That's the reason I had to ask, because I was like, yeah, okay.
We need to have a board this morning. Thank you for all your many blessings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you need any public comments? One note to the ten thirty, I have a prologue, so if we're not done, we can resume later. With that, we'll open the budget workbench. Go ahead, Sheriff.
Morning, folks. The only change from the last session is on the sheriff's side, looking at the municipal amendments. I think that was a good criticism, that it needed to be up lifted from ten thousand to twelve thousand projected. That makes my overall projected overage at forty thousand, that includes the deputy and the municipal. Bigger change on the law enforcement side on page two, thinking about the out of county housing costs. I would have left it at sixty-five instead of pulling out to ten. Reason being is, is that there's too many costs between if we have another freeze and we bust pipes and you have the housing made out. It'd probably be more prudent to have that money's available to account for early different times, situations, where we don't get stuck in the same situation where we're at this year, where we're just pulling out the budget.
Your proposal has to raise again, right?
Yes, sir, it does.
So the court knows that all the previous years that we got raised, we dealt into it, so keep that in our report forward.
When we talk about raises, you know, how to pay, if it raises for the starting positions, we're staying the same one for pay for the active deputies in jail and dispatch personnel. But the increase on the budget side of the payroll side of active deputies and deputies.
Any questions for the sheriff? I'm gonna file, Sheriff. I'm gonna file my proposed budget this week. You just let me know what I did put in, I did put in another deputy, another proposed ten, also three hundred. Was it sixteen thousand, thank you for passing help, so those are my only changes to the proposed budget. Anything else will be up to you guys, what y'all wanna do. Anything else?
We're sharing sixty-five thousand for the out of county.
That's all we've used so far, he is using that, put that back in his budget.
If we get the deal open and all that, we'll just be sitting there to go back and give him a fund later.
Absolutely, it's just a budget item, I spent, I'll tell you where it's at. I mean, I think it's great, you started with ten thousand, thank you, we're gonna keep the deal open. We've been down that road several times, but that's a more, probably more realistic number. What's next? Start at the top, go departmental department, or whatever you wanna do. We got an updated deal, any other changes, or?
No, I'm not gonna hand out a number until y'all decide, because if you change, changes in it, we've gotta change a bunch of numbers, especially with payroll or anything like that. Whatever y'all do today, you decide what you want in there, then I'll put it in there and we'll print something out.
I like this number from equipment that we got here. That's not in the numbers here on the previous one you gave us.
Yes, it is.
The numbers were the same on some of them.
Well, we round, I round on the budget, we round on everything on the budget.
Some of them were, we'll see.
That's y'all debt, the commissioner's debt. Is that what's coming out, y'all's pages with your debt on it?
A new number going in there now.
It should be under debt service, equipment, principal, and there should be an interest. I'm looking at precinct one, and you've got sixteen thousand five ninety for debt, and the interest is twenty-seven fifty-three. Does that not match with the next one?
Precinct four, it looks like it matched around forty thousand with another one thousand, so it needs this interest.
Yeah, precinct two has thirty-five thousand six fifty-nine on debt for the principal, and four thousand one ninety-five on interest. And precinct three has forty-eight thousand six ninety-one on the principal debt, and the interest is five thousand eight eight hundred.
Like on our computer software, so we budgeted for it last year, so are we just gonna roll that over to pay for it this year, or are you re-budgeting for it again, all that stuff here?
Are you talking about your revenue side?
No, expenses. Are we gonna start that software, what page you have that one on?
Oh, you mean our software from me and Gina? Yeah, that's in, I think, non-departmental, I think we got forty thousand budgeted that we haven't used the last two years. I don't know if, I was just discussing at the station, we might wanna, I mean, pay it. We're supposed to start in October, going around, we've had a Zoom meeting every week with them. All right, I don't want to question you.
I wanna know if you're gonna go ahead and pay for some of that, or throw it over, or budget it again.
Forty thousand? I, I think we're gonna try to pay it at the end of September, some of it, for this year.
We're not budgeting for it again.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, but we already budgeted for it once, you have to pay for it.
We haven't paid for it ever.
We haven't paid, we haven't paid anything, so it has to stay in there to be paid. Does that make sense, Karen?
Well, no, I don't know, it's the starter part, I thought we bought budgeted, thought we were starting.
We budgeted forty thousand for it, this year and last year. We didn't do anything last year, we haven't done anything this year, that's why I was saying, we may try to go ahead and pay some at the end of September this year, and then we'll have to, I mean, we're gonna have to have money in there, obviously, every year for software.
Yeah, I know, but we didn't spend any this year, what are we gonna do with the money we didn't spend this year?
That's what I'm saying, I'm gonna try at the end of September, which is the end of our fiscal year, to pay some of that. I'm gonna get to see what our bill's gonna be, so we can go ahead and take it out, say at least some of it this year.
They haven't, they haven't sent us a bill on anything yet.
We haven't got a bill.
Yeah, 'cause we, we still, we're still in the data migration phase.
They're not gonna bill us till they get it through.
That's what we're trying to do, is if we're taking money out of our budget to put in it for this year again, or moving that money from this budget we have this year?
We're not gonna move any money, I'm gonna try to pay on the software this fiscal year, out of the forty thousand that we budgeted, see if they'll go ahead and bill us. Then in October, when we start a new year, obviously, we'll have to budget again. So I'm just gonna leave forty thousand this year in for next year, 'cause I'm not sure what, we need to talk to them, what it'll be. It's just a budget item. We won't know the exact amount, I guess, we're having a Zoom meeting today at two.
Yeah, as we say, we could probably find that out this afternoon with our Zoom meeting.
Who you got a meeting with?
With Open Depperman.
With their?
We're having one every week, working on our software, we've been working on our software every, every week.
While we're doing this software, it might be a good time to go ahead and add that active track to it while we're doing it. We were splitting our new computer system and all that way, and several people were wanting more employees, this and that, and that would give us a better idea of the productivity of elected officials, and know what their employees are doing and all.
Preston, let me tell you something, the productivity in my office, I answered the voters' call. So I, oh wait, stop, don't even hurt me. So let me tell you this, if you want those products in my office, come out to my office. But, don't, stop, right there, let's, like, get finished. I gotta come out and hold your robe hands around.
Well, that's the whole point of getting that. It's, it's revised there, we are checking the productivity, I'm trying to handle it, timekeeping them, so.
You can't check our productivity by how much is done on the computer, because we don't, everything is not done on the computer. We're waiting in the back, they're making copies for, we're doing other stuff for, there's reports and stuff, you can't check our productivity.
Or timekeeper, let's see, we're gonna use this tracking deal as a timekeeper.
Okay, I have a time clock in my office, you can check that.
That's what I'm saying, if we're gonna do it to half the employees, we need to do it to all employees, right?
Well, we, I think we talked about.
Half the employees.
We talked about this last year, and y'all wanted time clocks, we were all for it, we all said, that's a great thing. Y'all came back and said, y'all do not want time clocks, because you're firmly we're gonna plug in the now. So you gotta make up your mind, Preston, which you want, because I have no trouble with time clocks. We have one, they have to log in on, physically, on their computer, in my office.
Then why do you have a problem with this active track?
What is active track, can I just ask that?
Well, you, people you're wanting to put in as your IT people, they talk to us about it, see.
They haven't talked to me about it, I'd like to know what it is.
Well, it, on your computer, it'll tell you how many keystrokes are done, when that computer's being used, what it's being used for, even if you're going on like, a website or something that's not, kinda, say, Facebook, or something like that, it'll give you all that information. Everything that's done on a computer, it will track it. That way, you know exactly what's being done in that office.
Do you intend to do that to my office, and the sheriff's office, and the county judge's office, wherever it needs to be?
The county office can't do that.
If you're opening a can of worms by monitoring elected officials' keystrokes, particularly in.
Basically, in a.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'd like, Ms. Thompson, I'd like to finish what I'm saying. You're opening a can of worms, when you do that, you're getting into illegal behavior by, by monitoring things, and where does this go, who sees these reports?
Well, it's the same way with the salary, you're supposed to have someone that's trained in tracking this other equipment.
I'm asking, who's monitoring this?
Well, we're at the set of approach, same way, who's monitoring our track, it's supposed to be someone that's trained to do that, you know? You can't keep me by.
Just asking that question, who, who's gonna see my keystrokes, for instance?
Like I said, your elected officials are private, they will not be on there, we're talking about employees.
Okay.
Employees are under our, that all our employees are under the direct supervision of the officials, so, I mean, it wouldn't matter what they were doing, if, which would be bad management, you don't know what you're doing, I'm just saying. But that would still be under, you're stepping over your line of what you can do. Commissioners are not torturing my employees.
Well, I'm just saying, I know we got some employees that are talking to labor law attorneys, and I think we got some litigation gonna be coming up on some of that, got too many people trying to push their personal agendas instead of what the bench for the county seems like, so.
Your honor, can I suggest maybe a closed session quickly to find out about this litigation? I'm not sure I want that discussed in public forum, but that's concerning to me in the first I've heard of that.
Absolutely. All right, what's next, guys? A lot of the developments, I think, we need to put fifty thousand in the budget for a labor law attorney, for protecting the county, for any possible upcoming litigation.
I wanna check on that, I think you played it during the.
I should know, a labor law attorney, though.
He suggested we hire one if we didn't.
Wait, 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 say that again, Karen.
He suggested we hire one if we had a problem, we thought we had, had the.
I'm sorry, I missed the first one.
Did you suggest we hire?
I did not, and I objected to you talking about this closed session. But let's be clear, since you said that in open session, I did not suggest you hire a labor lawyer.
I'm gonna say it again, and I would like to put fifty thousand dollars in the budget to hire a labor lawyer. Make sure we run the numbers for next, next meeting.
What are the numbers that we got to work with this year? Or is?
The printout that I gave y'all is pretty much, I went off the last year's, the tax revenue numbers, and we just received, I gave you a copy yesterday, Kellen's tax numbers.
Fifty-four thousand more there than we thought we were gonna have.
Yeah, well, we all have, we'll do the first, this list is coming next week, when we help, help us do all the tax figures next Thursday, and then we'll know kind of more where we're standing as far as our revenue. But I, I assume, or I'm thinking, it'll be about the same as last year's budget, so. Are you wanting to know like, our surplus, or is that what you want to know? Right now, yeah, right now, we got about a hundred and thirty thousand to deposit. But like, that can change, I don't hold it to that, because that can change next week when we do the.
Is that gonna be an extra deputy and all that?
I think it's what Judge told me, put it in the budget.
That's what the deputy, that's still a surplus.
Yeah.
Is everything that's been on these deals here, that we got in June?
Yes.
Request, and all that?
No, oh, no, that's kind of what we're here today for, is for you guys to decide what you're gonna let somebody do. And also, I know that you are doing a bid on that piece of equipment, and it's gotta run for two weeks in the paper. So if that's something that the court's gonna let you do, we're gonna have to budget that.
That's not in there yet.
That's not in there yet. Wouldn't that about twenty thousand a year if you're gonna finance it? That's not in there either, so there's some things that we'll have to consider. But I think Judge said earlier that he added Pats for hers, and then Sheriff, he said he added a deputy. So that's the only thing, as a request.
We got Pats, that's here.
Pats, good, so it's the rest of the departments that have asked for stuff.
Can I, can I assess clear protection on the shares, and I'm not grabbing, I'm just asking, that is extra deputy, is that also his racist identity?
None of the proposals, just a deputy.
Just a deputy, okay, that's all we're doing, survey.
I feel like that's the court's decision, I don't know if they want to make raises.
I'm sending one to the backup board.
I'm saying that Angie got down here, are, are allowed. That's not extra, I mean, it's just moving it.
Where you moved it from?
Well, she moved it from her, she wanted it from her travel, just to put it, get paid for it, sit down and turn it in, five miles here, ten miles there, and Nate Dixon's the same way. And I can understand that. So she, they don't, she actually, she would be just getting that prepped out where it is, I guess, and, I don't know, if any payments everybody all of a sudden.
Would that, would that be running it through payroll? Like, like y'all's travel is run through payroll?
You'd run it through payroll, it would change sometimes.
Check be an extension agent through payroll. I think would be the easiest.
I believe her and Nate both asked for that, so. I'm not saying, rate wise, and stuff from the, that's what I didn't do last time. I feel like we should just do straight across the board, percentage of everybody themselves. Because deputies, they did get a raise last year, a pretty good raise. And we also got John's news office to think about, if we move that, we're not budgeting for it.
We need to budget some kind of training and stuff, so we can get that changed, we need it.
But do you really wanna change it? I mean, 'cause you gotta figure, they're not doing away with employees in the appraisal district. You're adding another one over here, plus.
That was what she said, I don't know if that's.
Well, I've, I've talked to some of them, and exactly what all I would have to take in my office, and they're still gonna do more, it's more than just appraisal. They're gonna have, in the collections part, the, the will, deed stuff, and all, I don't even know what all, so they're still gonna have to do things in that department.
Johnny, I agree with you a hundred percent, and while I was in the, I talked that much with Freddie Brandon, I'm not gonna say which one of them. They said there's no way in the world you can come out that way.
I just, I mean, just a little bit I've investigated, I haven't had time to do a lot, it's, I don't know that it will save us money. I think if entities, uh, simply, you know, get, talk to them about, maybe there's areas in that budget that could be changed. I don't understand why they outsource the, the tax statements, you know? Why, why is that outsourced, that's gonna be five thousand in the budget, you know, there's just different things that maybe we could work together with that, that, because it's just gonna be chaos to me to split it, if you don't keep your appraisal and collections all together.
Well, other counties have done it, and they say it's worked out real well for them, so.
The ones I've.
I've talked to some other counties that have split it up.
Well, I have talked to a couple, some far.
I'm not saying you shouldn't investigate it, but what I am saying is, you can't do it now.
No.
You're looking at next year.
Well, that's what we're dying to do.
Training, so we can get it set up for that.
Set up what, offer us in the training, and so whatever we gotta do, budget for it now, or have a year of it, get it worked out, where one year contract comes up, we can go out into it, and not have to start the track.
Somebody has to be certified in office if we do it.
They're already certified over there.
It would take me like, three years to become certified.
But you could do it without having certified, we could get someone like, well, if you're an elected official, we could still do it.
Yeah, but I wouldn't be certified, but yeah.
Does anybody have a good idea what the software costs, will it require new software?
Yeah, we would have to have, their budget would stay the same with all that, I mean, we would add it and have it over here, and what Kellen's saying, they're still gonna be charging, you know, the fees to us.
Election budget would go away, there's two separate budgets over there.
Yeah, but those are gonna shift something over.
When we went to their meeting, it sounds like all they're gonna do is move everything from collections over to the appraisals. They're not, they're not gonna take away anything other than the responsibility of doing that tax for the county.
I think that's what she's saying, she wants it to sound like they're gonna say, well, you don't wanna do it, but that's just my thoughts only. What's next? We've got forty-five minutes before we go to the.
Oh, I, I don't know, you know, I don't remember if I just was a phone agenda, doesn't make a rush, I'm just gonna. We did get approved for the county wide polling places for November, I don't remember if I said that, since we got the letter. I don't remember what we talked about, but I just did wanna mention that to everybody, we did get approved for the county wide polling places for the November election, which we'll still have to do, um, some after everybody votes, and we can't ask them in the polling places. I had to have some people that voted do surveys and say how they liked it and stuff, so I want y'all to keep that in mind. We can know people that would be willing to do the survey, 'cause I have to have those to send back to the secretary, so. But we're not allowed to ask them in the polling place, or a hundred feet from the polling place, to take the survey, so. I'm just putting that out there for the commissioners, y'all know, you know, people, if they can be voted, you know, you might have them tell me, and I'll send them the survey, because we do have to have those, because this is just a, the first time, it's just, um, preliminary, and we still have to, I still have to send them a bunch of stuff after the selection, for it to be confirmed. I think it's gonna be a great thing, but I did wanna mention it, so y'all might tell your voters, Gordon, I maybe have a vote in their tent, uh, you know, they have to come over here to vote, and they, they can, they'll be able to vote in their tent now, at either the school or the Utes, or, I just wanna work my way, because I, I meant to mention it last weekend, I forgot. And maybe you can do that.
They just gonna be polling places, one after school, and.
The, in our tent, like, just like there's always been, we, we're not losing any polling places, it'll just be, like, if you, somebody that worked at the school that maybe had to drive over here to vote, they'll be able to vote at the school on election day now, so. Sorry, you took track.
You're good.
I forgot.
Next.
I think you might have a promotion or something to get, trying to put, track their base, get, no.
You just put it in your deal, we'll put it in your budget, we'll come back, we don't need to vote on it. We just need to know what you want in your budget, that's what today's discussion is. It's a budget, budget here.
We put whatever on the budget, I mean.
Should've been in whatever, but yes.
We need to do something about the precincts getting the same amount of money and not working, not having the same amount of roads to take care of.
I mean, Preston's the one that several years ago wanted them exactly the same, so.
I got roads, but they never get to the same, there's not the same mileage.
I got a hundred and eighty-five miles of roads, Preston has a hundred and fifty-two, Dexter has a hundred and thirty-nine, Gordon has a hundred and thirty-two.
And Kevin, that may change from every district, I mean, you know.
Well, it's been changing. This has been going on for years and years and years, and.
Yeah, I know.
My, my precinct has been suffering for it all this time, because, I mean, I'm, I'm taking care of.
He never went over budget, and Scott never went over budget, he's always had money.
Because we're not, we're, we're, we're not spending money we don't have, we're, we can't, we can't go out and, and.
Your budget's quite a bit figuring out right now.
Well, you've always had money left over, every place we've ever been, and you say, I don't need all this money, I can do with less, because you conserve all the road.
You have nothing to take care of, so like, no.
I work. You work twenty-one percent of the roads, and I work thirty percent, but ninety percent are.
There's a hundred percent difference in the roads.
That's four, that's forty percent more, not the thirty more, it's twenty-one. I work four, I, I take care of forty percent more roads than you take care of the same amount of money.
So what are you gonna do about the budget, what are you, what, what's your suggestion?
I suggest we prorate everything up, the supplies and everything, add them all up, divide them, times Gordon, divide twenty-one point six four percent, uh, times Dexter's. I suggest we prorate everything up, the supplies and everything, add them all up, divide them, times Gordon, by twenty-one point six four percent, uh, times Dexter's by twenty-two point nine three percent. Times Preston's by twenty-five point zero three percent, times mine by thirty point three nine percent.
That would be, I just, okay, idea, my, my question is, I'm sitting here looking at what we've done from July twelfth, and it's like you used a thousand dollar worth of gravel, I have a twelve thousand dollar budget, so I don't know why you would need more.
That's because I've been doing the grants.
That's another, then when are we gonna get that grant money in our accounts?
What grant?
The road work that we've completed already.
Uh, I'm not in charge of that grant.
Then they haven't made your problems, but I'm, I'm main telling you, they've been trying to go to the services of our.
I'm sorry, Joy, isn't that your grant, is that the grant you're talking about when you're in charge of?
Seat of Grant.
Mm-hmm, maybe you can speak on that since you're over that grant.
So when are we gonna get that put in our accounts, the precincts?
From the time that it's submitted, it takes them about thirty days to, it takes Tech Stop about thirty days to process it. And we should be coming up on probably sometime this week and getting the money in, I don't know. They send a check, and I don't have any control over when they send it.
So it's been more than thirty days already since we've completed the work, so we haven't got paid on any of that yet?
From the time that it is submitted, it is thirty days from then. 'Cause I have, y'all submit it to me, I submit it to Grant Works, Grant Works submits it to Tech Stop.
Well, that's gonna affect our budget too.
We should be coming up on a, on getting some money in sometime this week, if they go by the thirty days. That is what I have been told.
So when did you turn it in?
I believe it was turned in like the sixteenth or something, so we should have it coming in at least by this week. As far as I know, we have not seen it yet because they do not send the money to me.
I'll put it in, I'll figure it out.
You go ahead and figure it, when you start figuring this percentage, I want the very exact, exactly same amount of money as the highest ones getting it for payments that I am getting. So if somebody's getting fifty-five thousand a year for payments, I want fifty-five thousand in my budget, talking about stuff.
Well, you don't need as much, but you're not gonna use as much, you're less quick.
Well, take care of the roads, why do you need the same amount of equipment all day long?
It should be, uh, a line out of just the same amount for a whip, what it should have been, but we had it at one time, but it's changed over the years, you know. But there's times some people had more and some people had less, I've been two years without a payment. And so everybody else had to quit the payments then, so it hasn't always been the same.
It can't be the same, your debt is different, but your, your budget cannot be the same when you have different debt in your budget.
Well, I know that, I'm just saying. We just need to try to keep it where everybody feels pretty close to.
So we can try to keep around forty-five, fifty thousand dollars.
So are you saying you wanna cut my budget, or you wanna raise your budget, 'cause you've got thirty miles more than I do?
Well, that would catch yours and raise mine.
I'm not cutting my budget, buddy.
Good work, and you're right.
Sometimes we get a little bit of trouble, sometimes we don't.
Why, why does it take you, uh, forty percent more money for a mile of road to take care of your roads and that many?
I guess something's better in the way.
That's, 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 spend more money.
Yeah.
So you're better.
I'd like to bring everybody back while we're here for it, it's not an argument session, y'all, you did it on your own. It was discussed, but we've got thirty minutes left, but we have to go to probate, so I would suggest we move on with the.
Maybe we want some additions? I got this addition to fix our problems, go to the unit system, and it'll all be the same, nobody can drive.
I believe we still have time to call that election for November two.
That'll fix a lot of problems.
I don't think yet, I don't think that's a good way to go overall.
There you have it, there you have it.
We need a budget for it then, we're gonna do it. And that was softball that we're working about, who's got ten miles more than anybody else?
That was the deadline, I don't get you, thank you.
Well, it, I, I, and I would love to, I never had any commitment to petition, and Gordon said they can do it on their own, they can just vote on it.
The commissioner can vote it in.
There are different ways you can do it, and that's one of the ways, you know.
Go by election.
There are about four different ways you can go to the unit system.
Go by election, vote, and you have to go by election, vote it out.
Right.
Commissioners put it in, commissioners can vote it out.
So all you have to do is get on the agenda, and I'm not saying some people, uh, just to do that, that would be a Michael person, but, uh, then all we have to do is get on the agenda, they have to.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, I know something was said.
Oh, I'm sorry, I said that would be a Michael person on the universe, so Michael.
I, I, I looked into the, the petition system, and frankly, that's all I looked at, I, I mean, that's all I recall, but it'll be easy to figure out.
See, that's what I'm saying, all I've ever looked into is the petition, so Gordon's saying I can go to the, yeah, but.
There's statute, yeah, there's statutes about it, it'll be easy to figure out the various mechanisms to, to implement that, and I'm happy to look into that today.
I think all we have to do if that's wrong, is put on the agenda next time, and then just, uh, do the budget for it on that.
And we'll get more information, and we'll discuss it again later today. Michael, if you look into that, sure has big lots of them, I'll talk to the phone, some of them, first thing I feel about it.
One other to talk to that's been associated with that with, to. Yeah, about one to crash, because they didn't have other, that's right, in their county that's already done.
They broke Curry County, they went right back to the precinct system after, near the Rockville. You know, talk to a couple commissioners of Curry County, and they'll tell you all about it.
I understand, they said it seemed like it was about a couple of million dollars it cost, and they got a couple of million dollars they want to throw away?
I don't think it's gonna cost us a couple of million dollars.
Well, Curry County's, I think that's.
Well, Curry County's budget is several times bigger, Kevin, so if you want to use a percentage that you like to use, it will not be too many though.
I think, well, like, a white house would have to go away.
I have no idea, and I'll do a pretty good job of it, but it's like here today.
I know, sometimes, some, some counties, you obviously have to hire a road commissioner, some counties actually cut the commissioner salaries at that point because they don't have to take care of roads. All they have to do is vote.
Actually, you take off the travel expense, what would be deducted, be ten thousand eleven per commissioner, save you forty thousand from commissioning.
What I'm saying is that actually, that's not what I said, you may be suggesting that, but they've slashed commissioner salaries, because all you have to do is come in, come in once a month and vote.
I can talk to lady Warren, and I can find that thing, let me do it.
Move in, but.
Where are y'all at, guys?
They know the increases, we'll get there done.
Well, I have, what y'all suggest, be back in for next month.
Yeah, and I'm gonna put Dexter's first, these are quick, and what just, wanted in there.
So we gotta figure in another benefit, another vehicle.
Well, you have, you, you found another addition, you gotta have something for them then.
And if, yeah, I mean, if not the sheriff can get it, if y'all can, not do this.
Isn't that big? In the past, we've bought the vehicles out of general funds, that's understood, we can do it again, repair department, well, about last year, I know.
You do a lot of things, go to general fund, that's gonna need your budget. Another thing I wanted to throw this out there, we'll get you some numbers for our next meeting, every year, one of our big arguments is raises. Horrible last year, could be worse this year, I would like for y'all to consider, we'll have some numbers for you, to change that to longevity, changing our longevity program. And that's within the court to do whatever, but making that where it's a percentage raise every year, so we don't have to discuss raises anymore. What that will do to anybody, and I'm gonna use Pat for example, 'cause he's been here longer than anybody else, whatever that base is that she's making right now, longevity, her increase will go up. So if that retires, whatever, that base comes back, and then whoever starts the longevity ladder again. And the longer that they stay, the taxpayers will. Because here's the sad part, passed me here twenty-seven years.
I'm getting three thousand, three hundred dollars longevity right now.
Right, right, I'm saying change that and do a way of raises, we don't have to discuss that anymore.
So if you stay, if your employee stays, you reward them for staying with you, and if they leave, then you don't, then this person that was, I mean, because when you hire somebody, and all of this, when you hire somebody, and even if they don't have a lot of experience in what they're doing, they get the same money that whoever was here got.
If passed me here twenty-seven years and she leaves tomorrow, then whoever walks in starts at the same thing, she took her.
Yeah, longevity's gone, and your employees will do the same way, if they stayed with you all the year, you're gonna reward them for staying with this.
Every year, so they get a little raise.
Yeah, they get a little raise.
Y'all can, y'all can change that liability, I'm just saying if we moved our liability up to where it pays a little more, then we don't discuss raises anymore. You're, that's taking care of all of us, all of us, America.
So you're doing my percentage, or how, or are you doing them?
That's, that's, I'll just, we'll get you some numbers, yeah, we can do it any way you want to. So if you wanna do a three and a half percent, or whatever y'all think an annual raise is, to me, that just makes more sense. And it throws everything out, the only concession to that rule would be, if your next official was at forty thousand dollars in ten years from now, if that was way low, you might have to adjust the salary. You know, make it whatever it is for everybody else, but long, long term, I think this would be more effective, I can save the taxpayers money, if you've been here twenty-seven years, has to be quite a bit, but if she walks away, that all goes away, and the new ladder starts. The way it is now, if she walks away, whoever comes in starts with their top salary again.
Besides the longevity, there'd be less longevity.
Yeah, the three thousand, yeah, the whole three thousand dollars, yeah.
Anyway, just something to discuss.
And sir, but what about the part-time people that don't qualify for longevity, because they're part-time?
Well, that was my suggestion last time to raise that.
Yeah, I feel like we need to, because, you know, even the minimum wage is being discussed to be increased across the board, there's a lot of states that have already implemented it, even though it hasn't been totally addressed. Um, if I'm not mistaken, it's already passed to the House, just waiting for the Senate to raise to fifteen dollars an hour. And as I mentioned in my plea, for my request, I mean, people go and work at McDonald's for twelve dollars an hour, and we're only paying our part-timers ten?
What is our secretaries making?
The, the full-time assistant is.
I take BJ fifteen out of the ten thousand, y'all, if you kind of need to give them to them.
But a full-time secretary like Chad makes a twelve dollar.
Twelve ninety-seven.
Twelve ninety-seven hours.
Well, I may need to raise our secretaries up, well, that, 'cause then you're gonna be paying part-time fifteen, they're gonna, they're not gonna like it.
You're also gonna have to look at your jailers, your jailers are making fourteen something an hour.
They got insurance with fifty dollars a year. You can't even say you're capable of what that means.
Uh, if you do that, then you gotta raise your road hands, you got a secretary, you're gonna make a budget road hand, fifteen dollars an hour.
They don't.
They're sitting there with a hundred fifty thousand, I think so quick, kind of a maintenance and all that stuff, and somebody's gotta pick up the ball, there's a little difference in that.
Whoa, wait, 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 whoa, you better stop right there.
Seriously.
All right, sir, let's just stop right there. I want you to come into my office and see what happens in my office, 'cause I.
I know, I've been in your office bad, I just had a comment, yeah.
Yeah.
We, we, we've kinda got a little problem with road hands, that we used to require to have C D Ls, now none of them's got them, and they're making more than the guys that's got C D Ls.
Well, you go up here to Oldfield, actually, actually, a, a Dozer driver can make ten dollars an hour more than a C D L driver out there, they, so, if they can drive a maintainer or a Dozer, and that, they should be making more than a C D L driver.
So you're suggesting for budget as well, that we need to put that in there?
I think we would probably need to get a road hand's raise.
Just road hands.
All right, so we want the part-time hands, you gotta go with that, you gotta equal it out somehow, you can't, you can have a secretary making a hundred and fifty road hands.
So my question is.
I'm just saying, with that part-time, it's unfair, because, like, my office, you, you guys voted, y'all for him to raise the part-time paid fifteen dollars an hour? I can't do that in my office, because I need my employee in my office more, so I have to leave him at ten, and I only get nineteen hours a week out of that. Versus every one of you have brought in your part-timers, and you're paying them fifteen dollars an hour. Last year, there was an injustice done to another employee that's been here for sixteen years, sixteen years, and she was only raised to twelve ninety-seven. I mean, I think you guys need to look at that.
Well, you said that, you know, you have a employee that was looking for a full-time job, reason.
Yes, he wants, he wants more time, and I might lose him for that, because I can't, I can't pay him more money, I can't, I can't do it with that budget of ten thousand dollars.
Well, I have been looking for a full-time position, hand, for over five weeks, and he never come by for that job, he's looking for a full-time job, he could've come by for it.
Not, not everyone wants to work on the, uh, or has the ability, or they want to, to work in that position.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, I, I could, I could maybe make more money working at McDonald's, but I don't wanna work at McDonald's. I actually took this job and took a sixty-two percent pay cut to come to work at the county, because I want to serve a county.
Excuse me.
Did we raise the ten to fifteen on part-time?
What you can pay, you told didn't raise.
No, I mean, we're raising for ten thousand, fifteen thousand a year for a part-time.
We had it.
That's what we, I was just.
I think when you put that fifteen thousand in there for a part-time, then she can pay more. But I still think that you got your full-time secretaries working for nothing, they need a raise.
Right, my question is for the next meeting, what do y'all want to do for the rest? That's gonna be a big job, it's one, we need to have that.
That'd be everything, everything, we're gonna precincts, we're gonna go to fifteen thousand, they're on their part-time?
Yeah, we, we, y'all took y'all's out, went to three thousand, so apparently. And then, because we're running out of, we're running out of fuel, 'cause we have to run, create roads and so center, center.
You thought we was moving that money up, like, before, if we were, if they were, or grant work, we could move that up into the polling page if we were short on it, that way you needed something else, you can't, you can't move it down from employees to something else, but you can move it up to salary. That's pretty nice of them, that.
We got fifteen minutes, we gotta go to a real thing, are y'all gonna do all raises?
Your part-time, your full-time secretary, they're how much, twelve ninety-seven?
Twelve ninety-seven.
How much is the damage?
Fourteen forty-six, isn't that correct, Paul?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Fourteen forty-six.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you any suggestions, or just no?
I'm trying to set an argument for the next time, y'all want raises in here or not, I don't want that, you may hold that.
I think part-time, I'm, he's making twelve dollars an hour, and everybody, I don't know if soul anywhere, the next list is to them, no.
If you raise the part-time to twelve dollars an hour, you'll need to increase the budget line out to eighteen thousand ninety-six dollars. You'll need to increase the FICA, the retirement, and the group term, that'll change that amount to twenty-one thousand two sixty, at twelve dollars an hour.
Five bucks an hour, go.
Yeah, it changes all immediately.
It changes, you make one line, it's gonna change those other four lines, because we take out retirement, we have to do the taxes.
Is that what your suggestion is, you wanna pay it twelve dollars an hour?
I, I would love to pay fifteen, I'd really love to have full-time, but I can't, so, I, I, I mean, if that's what you're willing to give me, twelve, I, I would love to pay me at least twelve, but I believe it deserves a raise.
Senator, 'cause you already gave all the numbers at twenty.
Yeah, I have, I have.
Twelve, you already gave the numbers, I didn't know at twenty.
Well, I have a chart here, increase to that all the way up to fifteen, I can, I can give you a copy of it, Gordon, 'cause I, I would like to go to the fifteen, just like everybody else.
What is the fifteen dollar amount?
The fifteen, to raise the part-time to fifteen dollars an hour, you need to increase that budget line out of, uh, for part-time to twenty-two thousand six twenty. It would also change your FICA retirement, would change your value to twenty-six thousand five seventy, total change per part-time employee.
It'd be a raise, though, if you just raised it, you're, it just gives you fifteen thousand budget, you can pay what you want to, and when you run out of money, you have to, that's kinda the way we do it on our part-time.